Welcome, everyone. Please stand for the pledge. Chris, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Welcome all. We're glad you're here. Welcome to our guests. Welcome to our new faculty member. Welcome to board. I think you'll like it here. Yeah, for sure. So, okay, let us go right to the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve February 7, 2022, regular board meeting agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, approval of minutes from Gary.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the January 18, 2022, regular board meeting minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you. So we will go right to the student body report. Regina?
So, very large art report. Our art department is doing really well. Several art students are entered in the National Scholastic Art and Writing Contest this year. They've received four honorable mentions and two gold keys. Sammy McDonald, Ava Scoble, and Ada Daniel received honorable mentions for their art. And Emma Shearer earned a gold key award for her past Del Macaroon drawing. And Emily Sullivan was awarded a gold key for a pen drawing and also a gold key and silver key for two different writing submissions. This year, at the start year art competition at RIT, we had four students representing Geneseo, sixth grader Braden Edmonds, freshman Emma Shearer, junior Ava Scoble, and senior Emily Sullivan. Ava Scoble was given special recognition with the Lufon Shepherd Watercolor Award. And Emma Shearer was given the Bev Pierre Gallery Award. Next Wednesday, the 16th, all of Miss Adams' advanced art classes will be attending the Beyond Van Gogh immersive exhibit in Henrietta. They are very excited to see the works by Vincent Van Gogh in this initiative and unique presentation of artwork. Any questions on the art report? Okay. Andrew Slade got first place at skiing sectionals at Swain on Saturday. The Geneseo La Bonia Avon team, Harrison Oliver and Andrew are the two Geneseo students on the team, also placed first in the section. Boys' basketball and cheerleading senior night is tomorrow night. Our next girls' basketball game is tomorrow in York. And hockey is tomorrow in Batavia. Athletics has their final meet tomorrow. We're in first. If we lose, we'll be really mad. The last one. Rehearsals are going really well for smelling bee. I came from rehearsal to start at 6:30 and going back there. We will be done staging the entire show by mid next week. Our show will be done five weeks, five weeks from today. Everything will be, that will be gone and everything will be over. And Ms. Howard wanted me to let everybody know that patron tickets are on sale now and to email her with any questions.
I got mine today.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Regina, and congratulations again on your recognition from your church.
Thank you.
That's a big deal.
Yes, I will not be here at the next board meeting because I'm going to Greece for the awards.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I've asked David if we would change the order of our agenda just for one special recommendation. You have Ellie Bernard, who is going to be recommended for our new fifth grade position and just so she doesn't have to stay through all the presentations and questions and blah blah. Have that recommendation.
Someone?
Yes.
It's 8.12.
8.12?
Yep.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to, for the approval of appointment of elementary teacher in item 8.12.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous? Thank you and congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome to GCS.
And Ellie, you know, you're welcome to stay, but you're also free to go. But we are very happy to have you on board at Geneseo. I know there's one particular fifth grader who's also very, very happy with it. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You bet. Do you have Jamie?
No, Jamie's not here.
Okay. So we'll go right to the presentation. McDonald from campus and SEI.
I'm going to have to stand between the microphones.
Sure.
Barry, this one, advance the slides if you needed to.
You gotta trust me.
You hit that right quick, it'll advance the slides. I promise it'll be fine. I promise.
Which, do I quite read the screen?
Yes.
So I want to introduce myself just to start the presentation. I am Marcus Brazil, president of Campus Construction Management Group. Here tonight to go over our posted results from the bid opening that happened on Tuesday. I'm gonna let Gary run with most of the presentation, but just with the information that I'm sure Cindy has already shared with you. We are taking this very serious. You have our full effort to get this back on track. And do apologize for putting anybody in this place right now. As we go through the results here, we're gonna show how we came to our, the budget, our bid results came within the budget. And then we'll start talking about our next steps as a group on how to proceed with getting this back on track.
Good evening. We've met before. I'm Barry Huppin. I do want to take one moment and just really apologize. I'm very sorry for what occurred last Wednesday. Done this for 28 years and this was the worst bid opening I've ever seen tonight. I am profoundly apologize. We're gonna take a few minutes this evening and just walk through and recapture where we are and some of the things we have flushed out in the last four days. We've spent since Wednesday afternoon after the bid opening over the weekend diving deep into this. The approved offer, and as you know, was 15.5 million available funds. We determined prior to bid at $12,196. How did we arrive at that? That's, that's taking out the incentive budget and the contingency budget. So we arrived at available dollars for award was the 12.196 million. When we opened bids last Wednesday, we're actually very happy with the number of bidders. There is a significant amount of work out available for bid right now. We, Charlie, did a yeoman's job soliciting interest, trying to get as many contractors as possible interested in the project. Site contracting, we had seven bidders. General trades, as you can see, we had five. Plumbing, it goes for the mechanical and electrical. Electrical is challenged these days. Amazon has invested a great deal of money in the Rochester area building these major mega warehouses. They have made the I D E W commit to three shifts a day and really have sapped the electrical trades. We went into COVID with a limited workforce and this was just exacerbated it. The other project that's had a significant drain on the labor pool and most notably the electricians is the $200 million project up at Marketplace Mall that the University of Rochester is doing. Those have all had a drag on the market as far as available bidders. This sheet is presented to show you the low bidders, the contractors who submitted their by contract. LG Evans, who's an Avon-based firm. Steve General, who's out of Calabonia. Neri, who's out of Webster. Mineral piping, She Mel, who's done work here before. Bill Teer and the other electrical contractor was, that bid was Black and Farrell. And then the automation, which represents the state contract controls work. So we had, we had to account for what their price was going to be for doing the controls work on the systems. So this shows your base bid value for each of those contracts. Then it shows you what campus is responsible for on the SCD estimated value. We're showing you the variance and where we are different than where the actual bids came in at. And we also are demonstrating to you that, it hurts to read these, but the number, the variance, the percent difference between what we estimated and what the actual base bid came at. It shows you as you go down the column under variance, it shows you the difference between what the base bid, that no alternates, it's just strictly the base project came in at 17.2 with, and we had estimated 11.6. Needless to say, we got our head handed to us on that day. The alternates are demonstrated in the next box below. It's showing you, there were 12 alternates. We had, as a group, met quite a bit and the alternates were developed to what we thought would be bid protection. We always, in this market, we were pushing for 10% if we could get it for bid protection, recognizing the challenging environment we're in. Recognizing that, I know the federal government said that inflation in October was 7%, but construction has been significantly higher than that. Sometimes double, sometimes triple in the last year and a half. We have tried our very best to keep a handle on that and recognize and understand where the market is going. It's been whipsaw. Some things go up, some things go down, trying to keep a handle on a rather crazy world. But that, this demonstrates what the bid value was on the alternates and it shows you what we estimated, we thought the alternates would value at. And then it shows you the variance. And netted out to a little, some big percentage differences there, but it netted out to about an 8% difference between bid value and our estimated value.
And so since Wednesday, after opening up bids, our team has been diligently meeting with all of the contractors and talking with them to understand where their differences within the bids were themselves. So for the next slide that we actually had, we tried to identify all $5 million that was different between our estimates and what they did came in on bid days. So that's where you're gonna see, start listing of looking at that and identifying within quantities. And I think what we really saw was the labor and complexity, including some of the auditorium project and the gymnasium STEM addition together. And we got feedback from the contractors early on that, that piece of it, where we identified within the estimate after opening up bids, we did not have the labor included to the magnitude that was needed for the complexity of both of those spaces. So that was, that was something you'll see, Dave, especially when it comes to the GC package where the majority of this overage was identified. And it really comes into those materials with steel, aluminum, glazing that we see the increases have been so fluctuating. Gary will leave more into the points on them.
I'm sorry. You said, this box in the auditorium and the gymnasium, steam, and the mysteries and efforts, you did not take one into consideration?
We had labor in there. We did not take the amount, the complexity of the design. We lacked some of the labor after getting some feedback and putting that entire thing together.
So complexity translates into labor costs. And right after that bid, I walked back to our office here and called, David and I called Steve General and started that conversation with him right afterwards as to how, where's the difference? And one of the first things they said was, it was a very, very complex job, tearing down a portion of the back of this building and then tying in the new addition. They felt that there was a great deal of labor hours involved in doing that. The auditorium also being inefficient. We had a sense when we estimated, we sensed, we recognized that that was, the auditorium is not, it's very, it's very hard to get to. You're removing tons of steel in, really, really hard to get in there with it. We thought we captured that. The contractors pushed back and told us, no. It was, it was, they, they felt there was significant amount of labor involved in that in order to achieve the work that was to be accomplished. And, and thank you for asking a question because I meant to say that right at the beginning. If you feel like you want to ask a question, please jump in, ask as we go through this rather than wait to the end. If you want to jump in, please do. Site work contracts, so the bid discussion items for review, we are recognizing the storm piping, the pole barn foundations, the turf field. These are all factors that we discovered from what we thought was an accurate estimate value to what we were getting feedback from the site contractors, their perspective. So it's over and above what we felt that number should have been. General trades, we talked about briefly there. Demolition, Mark brought up the structural steel. 1.5 million. It's tough to look at. Plastic laminate, solid surface millwork, 85,000. The aluminum star front and glass, this is, this is the addition, this is the gym addition enclosing the building on the outside wall. Drywall metal framing, 400. Flooring. None of the GCs could get a flooring number. They, these are, the flooring number is, is a wag, really, is what they told us. They could not get anybody interested in bidding it. There was so much work out there that the subcontractor for flooring was, they were overwhelmed and they just threw numbers. And GCs, they, they, they just couldn't get anybody to write a quote to them, so they threw numbers at it.
We don't have, we broke the entire project, not just?
Yeah. Yeah. Elevator modernization was an additional 120 from where we thought it would be, and then their earthwork. So that steel and the aluminum is a lion's share of it, of that 5 million. Gym and steam room addition, fire suppression, that was introduced to us through the addenda phase when the documents were at SCD. SCD came back to the design team and said, you need, in the large group assembly area, you need sparse suppression. We reported back to the district in December. We thought that that was worth about 100,000. It came in at 150. The AV package, also that you'll see, we'll talk about that in a minute too, but the AV package was, was almost a half million more than we anticipated. Audiovisual. This slide represents our composed, compiled SCD estimate cost. We totaled, and these 15 items represent the 15 most significant items in the project that represent the dollars. And we had it at almost 13.4 and bid day it came in at 19.3. There's the 5.9 difference there.
So when you go back to that slide, look, you see the first two items is clearly how the group, group does this and it's getting part of that discussion. Between the gym, you have STEM steam all in one square footage area that goes vertically for two floors. And then you have the auditorium. Between both of those scopes of work, they go over our construction budget altogether between both of them. So I know it's something that we've talked about meeting on Friday and a meeting later this week and starting to look at how can we value engineer any of those items without doing a complete redesign to be able to save or identify some funds that we could save. But that's gonna be what we go into the next steps as a team to look for.
We have to also look into what we get from SCD based on what we were doing with certain spaces to allow certain things to happen, or are they going to be flexible with us based on what's been approved already? Meaning certain spaces we were repurposing and that was gonna give us money.
Right.
You might get to that, but these are, and there's so many factors because you look at what we put out to the community, still was scaled way back from what we were initially thinking. And now looking at, you know, some of the bigger projects.
So as I understand it, is that we need to do renovations in order to cover the cost of the gym? So there's, there's, there has to be conversation there as to how to repackage this and get the aid that is necessary to drive the project.
For the other stuff?
Yes.
Right.
Correct. And certainly rely on SEI on that conversation as well. And so they have the direct link with SCD in those conversations.
Yeah, the biggest factor is the steam rooms. They generate heat for the gym. So any sort of redesigning we look at, we're gonna have to take that into account.
And Chris, just so you know, tomorrow, we are having a, we have a meeting scheduled just to do that. Everyone is involved, our fiscal advisors, campus, SEI, we're all in the room looking at those different pieces because you're right, every piece impacts the next piece.
Next steps, just to take a pause, take a breath, and review the current scope. It's designed to identify district priorities and it ties into this conversation as we're here. And review the current site contracts to decide whether or not to recommend to proceed. It's been, we have had that debate. Do we capture the bid that was for the site and go ahead and get the turf field done? The site contract can be, could be awarded and not affect anybody else. It's, it's a standalone contract that has no impact on the addition or the work that goes on with that addition or the auditorium. It's very isolated from everything else. It is higher than, it certainly is higher than we had estimated the cost of that. But if that were to be awarded now, then it would give us a shot at being the turf field ready for this fall. Bids are?
The only thing that goes with that is we have to look at some of the electrical components that were out of the field also.
Correct.
Parting lights, parting hot lights, and then also the press box had some utilities that were getting run to us. We have to just make sure we tie that out to we proceed with that contract. So that's something, that's an exercise that's ongoing right now.
Because there's electric and fiber that goes, good point. Fiber and electric goes to scoreboard, post site lighting. But that was in the EC, electrical contract, not the site contract. So, so it's not undo what's done is that we'd have to grab that electrical work and accomplish that in concert with the site work. We wouldn't have to award the electrical contract to do that, that could be bid or procured elsewhere. So provide status update. So we are proposing to you to come back, starting with the meeting tomorrow, to come back to you on the 17th and report back for next steps.
And that's really what tonight, tonight is an informational gathering time. We don't have, we will not take any action tonight. We'll take action on February 17th. This is really an opportunity for you to, you know, ask questions and try and really understand where we are in the process.
Questions from the board? Please, gentlemen?
You know, I, I don't know what you know, I don't get it.
I know.
In my experience, I've never seen a miss like this. You, you, you point in one sense the complexity of the job. We know what the complexity of the job was several months ago. So it's, I struggle with that being true rationale. You talk about the steel prices. You know what the steel prices were? In March, in July of 2020, it was $440 a ton. December, 900 a ton. March of 2021, 1270. And it's leveled off around there through today. They expect that through this year, the price of steel to drop about 7 to 15% depending on where it comes from, China's probably. You know what glass is. You've known this entire project. So why is that such a surprise? I mean, I think your, your second biggest challenge is convincing us what the next steps are and how to recover. I think your biggest challenge right now is restoring your credibility, which I'm not sure I, I'm comfortable with. Why didn't you know this? Don't you have somebody looking at the raw materials? Don't you have somebody looking at the, the items that you're gonna be using in the, in the project?
Yes, we do.
Yep.
How did you miss it?
Yes, we do.
That much. I know contingencies, I know all that. You know, there's risk mitigation. I teach it, but how did you miss it so much?
Going back and looking at our, looking at our quantities, there was, the labor built into the quantities, probably our biggest component of missing this number altogether. It, without escalation of materials was identified. When we did our SCD estimate, it was middle of November. And it got looked at throughout SCD, but we only looked for the changes. They did not get captured correctly. And that's it. And for our credibility, I would agree with you 100%. Do we still here and deliver something better for you?
So you're talking about, so you're talking about that, you know, everything was quite visual when we touched the material costs and stuff like that, that they're out there. The market was showing the increases on a steady climb on a quarterly basis and stuff like that and other, you know, flooring, laminates, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But one of the things you keep talking about, Regina mentioned, I'm sorry, is that, you know, the labor kind of caught me off guard. All right. Are you not in tune with the labor and to the union contract and the cost? What were the increases in labor?
The increases were actually just hours of putting this job together. It's not, we didn't have the correct quantity of hours to put the job together based on, especially the steel and the window packages going into it.
So you turn around and you go back, you identified that this is a trim to complex building structure and stuff like that. All right. Would not even put up any type of a red flag due to this complexity would increase the labor cost.
Correct. That's just, that's what missed on our end. And that's something that we're taking a dive in and we're understanding from the contractors. We had more meetings set up this week to really identify with the steel contractor. We've talked to them twice briefly on the phone and gotten their materials and hours built into the job. And we identified it. We want them to explain it to us a little bit more to say, why did you carry lease? And was it, are they putting additional escalation on it, knowing that they don't have the time really do a takeoff? Or was it something they really saw that was hours in there? So there's, there are still some questions that are getting answered from the bids that opened up Wednesday afternoon.
Or are they also building in escalation, recognizing they won't be even putting steel in for six to eight months from now? So they've been beat up. So they, they've bid work in the past where they've gotten beat up by not carrying big enough numbers. So now they're gun shy. Do they now throw in higher numbers for fear that, well, we don't, we're not even gonna be on the job for eight months? Who knows what steel is gonna be? And they, and they literally pad their numbers. We can't predict that. We can't tell them they're, they're bidding it. We can't get in their head, but it's just, it's conjecture, you know? And we're trying to understand that better.
Is that where they're coming from?
Fellas, to say that we were, we are profoundly disappointed would be a gross understatement. You guys are the experts.
Yes, sir.
You came highly recommended. We've been at this for what, three years? And committees and, you know, everybody was looking forward to this project. That auditorium has been, should have been fixed a long time ago. We're gonna fix that. The steam, the gym. And, you know, yeah, everything's gone up, but to be off by 5.9 million, it's just, it's hard to accept that you could be off by that much. I remember when you guys were in before we put the bond issue vote out. I remember saying, are you sure you got enough money? And the answer was, yep, we got enough money and we even got some money for contingency. So I said, okay, fine. Well, I guess you did. So I'm not sure where we go from here. Another question I have for you. You do the pricing, but Ted does the design work. Did you guys have any conversations as this was going on? Like, did you say to Ted, this is what we think it's gonna cost? And did it say, you know, I've done a few of these, I'm not sure you're in the ballpark? Did any of those conversations take place between you fellas and the engineers?
That's an emphatic yes.
Okay.
So, so there's a schematic design done, there's a development design done, and there's a SCD submission. So at each level, we do an estimate and we sit down, we call it reconciliation, we sit down with the architect and the engineering team and we go through line by line by line by line. They have it ahead of time. We get it done. We send it to them for their review. They digest it for however many days, a week, and then we have a meeting. We lock ourselves, literally lock ourselves in a room and spend the day and go through it. And there's pushing, there's push and shoving and there's moving. And we end up reconciling and being on the same page before we sit down with the district and bring it to the district and, and review it with them. Absolutely.
Ted, did, did you see any red flags in these discussions in the closed rooms? Did you see anything, hey, wait a minute, guys, I don't think you got enough money there. This isn't your first rodeo either.
Right.
You, you've done a lot of this stuff. Did you see anything that, that set off red flags?
Well, we had the long meetings, as Gary mentioned, and both meetings were painstakingly going through each item.
Sure.
And we, we brought our architectural components in terms of challenging more or less the quantities is what we were. And we, we brought our architectural components in terms of challenging more or less the quantities is, is what we were looking at. Because we, we always want to see, is something missed or is something overcompensated for? So if we look into our rapid model and it shows 5,000 square feet of wall, but the estimate shows 2,500 square feet of wall, you know, we have to bring that as a red flag. So that's what we're doing, each item, are we too high, are we too low? And that's what we're coming together at the same place.
So that process took place?
Yeah, the unit costs, we don't look at as closely. We have some general knowledge of that and usually what we'll bring is either vendor information or if we have a previous bid that's, that's come in or just some pricing that we've seen on a job that just happened. We might say, well, we just saw this in flooring over at this district, that type of thing. But to this degree, I don't think we, we saw it either. I thought it was going to be over, to be honest, because of some just recent escalations in pricing, but I didn't think we'd go by this much. And this is, this is the highest one that I've ever seen. So it did take us by surprise.
And also, you fellas have done more than one of these. And you've probably got favorite contractors that you work with, that you like. Did you bounce any of this off contractors that you've worked with?
Yes.
And say, this is what we're thinking, what do you guys think?
Yes, we did. And, and, and my frustration, Charlie's frustration, was after, in talking to the contractors in the office. Because what they typically do is days, weeks, days before the bid opening, they'll call us and say, what's your, what's the engineer's estimate? What's, what's, what's your budget for each contract, you know? So the GC will ask, what's your budget? He says 6.8. Not once, not once did anybody call us and go, well, you're out of your mind, what are you talking about? We're at 10, you know? Not once. I mean, and we had that conversation after the bid, it's like, what the heck, guys? You couldn't pick up the, I, you know, even if it was two hours before, at least we could have given Cindy a kind of heads up. But they didn't, it's not their fault, they don't owe it to us, it's not their responsibility, it's on us, it's all us. But it was just like, I can't believe they didn't ask. And someone said, you know, I'm really sorry, we were caught up in the moment and didn't even think about calling you, you know, I'm sorry, I'll remember next time. That's, but that's not on them, that's on me, it's on us.
We had a conversation the day before the bid opening with an area contractor, very good, he's done a lot of work for schools and municipalities. And he says, I'm not sure I can bid this, I'm not sure I can do it within that amount of money. And he ended up not bidding.
Yeah.
Well, he had a sense that you didn't have enough money.
I talked to the same person properly.
Yeah, so-
Yeah, yeah, a couple of days ago.
You know, we, we appreciate your due diligence and we will do our due diligence too. But we're just, couldn't be more disappointed, couldn't be more disappointed. You know, at least three years of work comes down to this. So-
We are-
You do your due diligence, we report back to Cindy and Ken, and we'll talk about it at our next board meeting. I think this is so far off, I, I'm not sure how we can repackage it.
I understand.
Anyway, you're, you're brave to come in. But this is, this is, this is a, this is a big problem.
And we will, we will stick with it to sure to get you to the end of this one way or another.
Well, we're not going to get to the end of it on 15 million.
Correct.
In hindsight, we should have probably been asking for about 21 million, in hindsight. So that, that was a big miss. So, you know, you keep doing your thing and we'll do our thing and we'll go from there. Go ahead.
Mr. Hoffman, you said that we can actually put the site work out for the field because it's an independent contract.
I'm sorry.
You said that we could do the turf field as an independent contract, that's your silver lining.
Yes, yes, I believe we could.
All right, but it's 29% over.
Correct. I did mention it is, and that's still over our estimate, absolutely.
All right, so if we put that out there, where's the guarantee that, you know, they're not going to run into some problems? And then all of a sudden the prices start to increase, so we've been on a cost overrun. All right, and then how's that going to affect the balance of the project? Did anybody, and it's been set so many times before, okay, what that field was built on? Were there any actual core samples done on that field so that anybody bidding it had a good understanding of what lies below it?
Ted, so, so Ted has a subcontractor marathon who is his site engineer, who does, who I believe did do cores, did borings out there to see what's in the sub base in there. So that was designed into the, designed to build the new field, what they found in those core samples.
There's a geotech report in the specs that were part of the bid package. They have all that information.
It's not to say they don't find something and, and, and-
If we awarded that debt, do you think that they could stick to that number?
Well, they're, they're contractually obligated to, to that number. If we discover something in the ground, that's a different story, and that, an undiscovered condition. But they find an old oil tank or something, I don't know, I'm just, but a, a really brief story is years ago, we did a project and it was a new soccer field, multi-use area. The architect used, had an engineering command core 10 times in that field, nothing, came up clean. Put the dozers on, started stripping, kid you not, we just, 3,000 boulders later found rocks from this size to, to large rocks. They bored 10 times in that field, never hit a one, but we literally hit 3,000 rocks, significant rocks. They couldn't move a foot without hitting a rock. If, if you ever go to Scribner Elementary Penfield, you'll, you'll, the whole multi-use field is, because it would have cost a fortune to get rid of them. So we thought aside the box and built a, a wall around the field and-
It tells, it gives you a snapshot, gives you an idea.
Opinion on if, if we go out to bid on the turf field? And then in the final review, the scope of the project changes dramatically. Are we back to SED approval and starting all over? If the scope changes, any other portions of the project?
You mean if we award the site, then we go with a redesign on the rest of the building projects? It, it probably depends on what we do. If we, let's say we change the addition quite a bit, we would probably want to send it in if it has exiting the safety components to it. If we take an item like the auditorium and we find a million dollars worth of value engineering and theatrical lighting and other things that we can just draw back and they aren't safety issues, then there's no resubmission required.
Okay.
There's also, you know, to talk about if they run across things in the field, there's that $833,000 that's been set aside for construction contingency, which is not part of that number, if you go back to section two in that report or this slide, it shows the three categories of incidental budget, the construction contingency and the construction contract values make up your 15 by. So that 833 still has been unallocated, not produced, to try to be able to accept any more scope at this point. It'd be something that definitely gets evaluated as, as one of the processes we've been working on.
Now, so give a little bit more of the site package for the results. There can be conversation with the site engineer to look at potential value engineering within that. I think that goes back to your question, is there money we can save within that contract? Do we have to meet with SEI and your consultant to determine that? That is possible.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else from the board?
We've got a 24/7 project between now and the 17th.
And that way, since Wednesday of last weekend, we continue that way. We know how important this is and I'm sure you worked all our effort to get us across there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Good evening.
You too.
Mr. Forrester. Budget update.
Budget update. I was a friend getting into the fire perhaps, I don't know.
Uh, where are we? So, tonight we're just going to talk about two of our more easier departments to look at, I guess I would say. Facilities and transportation, they don't tend to change a whole lot from year to year. More predictable. They, they are more predictable, maybe not perhaps like, you know, the steel market or what have you. Up here you'll notice, this year, we have salaries and wages for the transportation department at 522 going down to about 450. That number is going down because a year ago when we were starting to talk about budget, we didn't know how we were going to be transporting students. We had double trips built in and we actually also built in another contracted driver for the current school year. Again, we weren't sure about social distancing, how we're going to get kids in, to and from school, and we know we don't have to do that. So this, we fully expect that that number is going to drop a bit from current year going forward. The other big change here is down here in our contracted transportation. That looks at all of our, our contracts for kids going out of district. We've recently picked up one more district going up to Webster, and that number is reflected here in that 302. So the transportation overall is going down about $20,000 when you got everything out. There's really, those are the only two that are, have any real significant changes to them one year to the next. Moving forward to the facilities department, forgive the blank line up there, I'm not sure what that is. Here, in this salary line, however, you'll see the wages are going up from one year to the next. Contractual salaries are built into there. And we're also looking to see if we couldn't find a laborer for that department. What we've noticed is it's, it's difficult on the weekends, the building is open seven days a week, almost 24 hours a day. And not having somebody here during the, during events on weekends is a bit of a challenge. So the idea here is if we can find a laborer and have them work a, a schedule of Saturday through Wednesday, have them here when people are here. And those outside groups can be a little bit of a challenge because you have to find the right person. They're going to be here, you know, kind of alone, you know, so it's going to be a jack of all trades kind of person. So that might be a little bit of a challenge, but that's why that number is, is going up from one year to the next. Then the other numbers there are pretty consistent year over year, as we talked about in our finance committee last week. The electricity number and the natural gas number, we're, we may be a little tight there, you know? Those numbers don't look, or those, those costs don't look like they're going to come down a whole lot in the coming year. We're not entirely sure of that, but they aren't looking great. So we're, they are where they are. And that, excuse me, just our cleaning supplies down here, we spend a lot of money on, on those, but we're fairly consistent, even in, in the height of COVID, we've done pretty well there. But again, we, we come here, we, we've tried to tune in these numbers a little bit. If we look back over the history of, of the department, what they're spending on repairs, both contractually having outside companies come in and do work, or what we're spending on materials. We're trying to dial those numbers in all the time. So not a lot of change here from one year to the next, you know, $60,000 on a 1.2 million dollar department. Pretty, pretty manageable, I think. So that, that's really all we have for you for tonight. We will be meeting with the finance committee 10 days from now to talk about primarily special ed, special ed budget. And there was something else that's been in my mind right in the second, but we'll be meeting with them. Yes, sir? So maybe if I can do my finance report now and, well, Ken's here, this is what we talked about at, and last week. Just to, I know, I don't know who moved it, but thanks for moving it, because the, the increase in this budget is roughly equivalent to the decrease in the other sheet that Ken put up on transportation. So it's, it's, yeah, right now, we're in the noise category of finance, but- Pretty, pretty close, yep, one to the next. These are, like I say, two pretty stable departments. Time to start here because they're pretty straightforward year over year. Excuse me. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Mike. Okay, which leads us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer, so we'll flip to my power point. So just a brief summary, because really what we have been focusing on and spending 99.9% of our efforts is really where are we moving, how we, how are we moving forward with the capital improvement project? So, but why wouldn't we start with some positive? And prior to the board meeting, we did talk about our tenure recommendations. And at our next March board meeting, we'll be recommending tenure for seven teachers and one administrator. So remember, this is effective as of September 1st. But really excited about this, this next crew coming up and what they've done for our school. We talked a lot in that meeting that they had some pretty unique challenges having those three years of COVID. But they've come out on top and we're excited to have them as, as tenured staff. So our capital improvement plan, you obviously just heard that our bids for the capital improvement came in $5 million over budget. Here are our options. So we can reject all bids, we can accept some of the bids. What I recommend is that we pause and repackage the capital improvement package and rebid in the future. And, and it still is not ruling out potentially accepting that site work and making sure we have that turf field for our fall much as we promised our community and our students. But really, this was too big of a project to quickly repackage it and go out to bid within a month or so. As David and Mike said, we spent years planning this. It was something that, to Chris's point, we scaled back from 60 million to 15 million. We really thought with all the work that we had done, we had something for everyone. We had met the needs of our STEAM component group, we had met the fine arts group and the needs for athletic. And, you know, obviously, this news was, was very disappointing. And now our, our goal is to, you know, pick ourselves up and move forward and figure out what we can do next. Unfortunately, we're not alone. This is happening all over the state. And in fact, when I, when I talked to our law firm about our options, they said, you're the third superintendent this week that has called on this exact issue. So you can see Messina had cut 3.9 million out of their building project. Both Hilton Central School District and Fairport also recently had their bid openings and they were over budget. Not to be accepted as word. And COVID. So it's, it's interesting, as we saw that spike, as I reported last time, you know, go high really quickly. We are now continuing on that low number, as of today, we have zero positive cases. We are still having people, parents, staff, students utilize our test, request the test form significantly down. You know, in the height of when we saw our numbers really spiking, we were testing anywhere from 30 to 40 people a day. We're down to four or five people requesting those tests. So as you saw last week, the Genesee County, Orleans County Superintendent sent a letter to Governor Hopel and the commissioner really requesting that we have local control. Livingston County also sent a very similar letter, and what does that mean? We have worked closely with Livingston County Department of Health throughout this entire process. And they have really listened to what our needs are, they've supported us, and I believe they've done what's right for our community. And what we're asking for is instead of just having a broad mask mandate, a broad continuing daily reporting of COVID tests, continuing the testing of our non-vaccinated or at least unverified vaccinated employees, give us some ability to look at our community and make those decisions. And we wouldn't make those alone, we would certainly rely on our school attorneys for our legal advice. We would rely on Dr. Collins as our medical director, and we'd strongly rely on the Department of Health, who again, has been a great partner. So we are, we are requesting that someone listen and, and hopefully that's coming. But next Thursday, these emergency regulations are on the Public Health and Health Plan Council agenda. And just concerned because continuation for 60 days of mask wearing, continuation of, I said 90 days for the reporting of our daily COVID tests, and continue 90 days for testing unverified vaccinated employees. So really hoping that we will see some movement in that direction, but, but stay tuned.
Now, that entity is a state entity?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep, part of the Department of Health.
Gotcha.
So what, if they made those recommendations, the Department of Health would then have all those, the ability to make all those decisions.
How big of a supply of test kits do we have?
So what are we up to, 1,600? So what are we up to? 16 hundred? So we have been getting a weekly supply of tests from.
Is there a shelf life on those?
Yes, there is. So we have to make sure that we are utilizing our first batch, um, expired end of January. So we need to make sure that we were here that. They did expand that out a month. So what happens is when that expiration date gets close, they then go back to the manufacturer and say, would there be any availability to move that date up? So yes, we are being very careful with our dates because they do expire. Any other questions?
Back to the capital project, what are, you obviously have the conversation with our attorneys, what are our legal requirements? Like if, if we chose to do just the field, in my mind, that's not necessarily what people voted on. They voted on the whole thing. So is there, what's the?
So we have 10 years to move forward with spending the money for that project. So we wouldn't just do that field. It would be, we're doing the field and then we would lay out a plan on what's next for the rest of our capital improvement project. The other piece that's important to remember, or at least to note, is that we have to do $10,000 worth, worth of work inside the building to access our building aid. So that, 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 with what we have in the project, that would be pretty easily pulled out.
If, if we were to do that, if we did the field, repackage, go from there, obviously we need more money. So conceivably, we'd have to have another proposition asking for X amount of money on top of what we've got left after we do the turf field, if we go that way.
That is one option.
Okay.
The other option is really looking, you know, they talked. They talked about the complexity of, of the steam and the gymnasium, the complexity in some of the, um, pieces that we had put in the auditorium. So, you know, is there a way to scale back some of the original design, but still get an additional or at least an enlarged gym space with bleachers? You know, do some updates in the auditorium and then have our steam space. And it's, it is tricky for Geneseo because our building aid is not as high as other districts. The gym space, parts of it that's outside of the footprint doesn't generate building aid. So we have to make sure that when we're having these conversations and we're looking at repackaging, that our fiscal advisors are there. Because if we move forward with certain aspects, we could be increasing the local share substantially. So we need to also make sure that not only do we deliver what we said as far as what we had in the project, but we also don't increase the cost unless we go out with a new vote and then they knowingly approve that. So there's, there's lots of moving parts, but that's why we're having everybody at that table tomorrow. I wish we weren't in that position, obviously. Um, you know, I wish they were telling us that we were under budget and we had money to spare. I do feel confident that campus is going to do everything in their power to make this right. What we do moving forward is whether or not this is a long-term or a short-term relationship with campus is absolutely something that we always have available. We made sure that when we did enter into contracts with our law firm, that that was something that at any point, if we wanted to end that relationship, we could. That also has implications because then you're starting all over again and that really would delay the pro, the, the project and when we can start.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Thank you very much. Which leads us to, uh, community relations and I, and, and I have a sense that our esteemed, uh, immediate past president, our, our president emeritus would like to speak to the board.
I don't know how esteemed. Um, I just, I, I'm here solely as a community member today. Um, obviously, yes, I was president of the board and on the board for eight years. I just like to put my two cents in on that bid. That's ridiculous. I'm so upset and disappointed over that. Please do not coconers on this. There was a huge group of people who said what they wanted in this building project. It wasn't just the field. I agree with Craig and Brad who said it. Yes, the field's important, but that steam room's really important. Fixing the, um, auditorium is huge. Those kids deserve it. Our community deserves it. And then the space for the, um, for the gym. I get that there's a lot of choices and you have to look at a lot of things. But I think it would be a really bad idea to try to slim everything down into a littler thing now to get it into this box. And then five, 10 years from now, when none of us are still here, somebody else has to fix that mess. And maybe rebuild or tear things out. Look at our parking lot. Look at all these things that we have had to redo because we didn't do it right the first time. So I really would appreciate as a taxpayer, I would rather honestly, you fire them, go out with a whole new bid and have it be higher and see if people are willing to pay that to keep the things people said were important to them. That's, I'm not saying, that's just my personal opinion. I'm not saying that's the way you should go or you'll end up going. But, um, I think you need to trust the taxpayers in this community to make a decision about the situation and not try to maybe push it all into a smaller box. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're, you're, you're a little more than a, a, a community member. You've got a history at this table and.
I don't envy your positions tonight. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, neither do we. Thank you very much. So, finance, I think we're good?
Finance?
We've got the policy. We've got a couple of first reads, I think, and a couple of required boilerplate, uh, policies that we need to do. And although we're not going to meet again until March, we are going to stay on top of it. Cindy had a great conversation with the, the gal from Erie One Boses, who seemed very cooperative and would come down and help us and, and it is very much in the bargain, which I was very encouraged by. So, so we'll get there. We'll, we'll, we'll keep plugging her along with these policies. Okay. GCTF?
Um, GCTF has not met, um, but due to, um, just the continued issues, maybe not just the increased in positive rates, but the continued issues with COVID and the challenges that it is presenting. It's likely that GCF will cancel their Hardwood Classic again. So hoping soon to get back to being able to offer that community event. It's always one that everyone enjoys. And so, um, this year they have made the decision to most likely not move forward.
I'm, um, I'm on their email list and retired faculty and, uh, some of the other oldsters like me, uh, get a letter from them at Christmas time, you know, you care to contribute a few bucks. And, uh, they took in over 2,500 from, uh, the retirees, uh, this Christmas time, which is nice. So they're doing some good work. Okay. Personnel?
Personnel. We've already done 8.12. So I entertain a motion to approve items 8.02 through 8.11 and 8.23.
And you got any?
Okay, and 8.1.
Okay.
I'll second your amended motion.
All right. Any discussion on any of these items? Okay. If not, everybody good? Um, all in favor, say aye. All right, aye. Anyone opposed? No one opposed? Thank you. So we will go to.
Under new business, entertaining a motion for approval of items, to make sure, 9.02 through 9.06.
Second. Discussion on any of those items? No? Okay. Hearing none? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
Under business office, entertaining a motion for items 10.02, 10.03 acceptance donations, 10.04 check warrants, and 10.05.
Second. Questions on any of those? Oh, okay. Now, yeah, we got, um, donations from the, the Kiwanis. Sunburn sales and from ESNL. So we're grateful for those. Okay. No questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Uh, 11.01 meeting change date. First meeting in March? No?
Yes, it is. It is the first meeting in March.
Suggesting change one to one.
So the superintendent's conference is in Albany and they are in person for the first time in a year. So, so we'll be back together. Um, so if we look at that week. On the ninth.
So we would have ordinarily met on March 7th on Monday. What are you suggesting, ninth or 10th?
We can do the ninth or 10th, so Wednesday, Thursday, whatever works better for the board.
Either one is fine with me. What about you folks?
I'll just speak for me and ninth is best for me, Tuesday, Thursday, as I teach.
Oh, that's certain.
I'm not, I'm either of those names?
I need to do the. Oh, okay. Sounds like fun. Okay.
But I hope you come back.
And we would do audit before.
Yeah.
Okay. Kathy, the ninth?
Good year's ahead.
All right. Let's call it March 9th. Moving the March 7th meeting to March 9th. Great. Yeah, yeah.
See you tomorrow.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. Off the hook. And, oh yeah, the, the GD Boses board.
Right.
We used to have, to have like a 3:30 special meeting with four of us to approve the people that have volunteered to serve again. Did I see where we might be able to do that at a regular meeting or not?
So here's the, so the only, if there was ever an argument or a question about who was elected or who had the vote, that the votes that happen on April 25th are the ones that would count.
Okay.
So they like for, if, if you don't have a special board meeting on April 25th, they just want, Boses would like you to vote on the incumbent Boses board members that are, um, seeking reelection for the Genesee Valley Board. So it would make sense if we did our diligence, had a quick meeting on April 25th and voted for, um, it's Nora Foust, uh, who is seeking reelection, resident Nantica, Roger Kowalski, he is from Warsaw, Robert DeBrucker, that's the resident Avon, and then Christie Trandal Bean is a resident in Heshua. So they are all seeking to be reelected on the Genesee Valley Boses board.
That would be a, a Monday, uh, April 25th. I know, I know Norv very well. He's a, he's a really good guy and the rest I'm not sure I know. But they're all incumbents and they've all volunteered to do another term.
Yes.
And, um, no one else has thrown their hat in the ring for any of those slots. So why don't we, um, have that special meeting on April 25th? And when we get closer, I'll, I'll poll you guys and see if we can't get four together some afternoon for a five-minute meeting. How, how's that sound?
Okay.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session to talk about contractual negotiation and the superintendent's mid-year review.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous? Thank you.